Steve Stinner.
Here. Could you join us for a pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
We move on to approval of minutes. Anybody have any, anything to offer towards that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Our first item is item A, PUD 15-001, Best Western Hotel at Gold Hill Square South. This is continued from August 27th and is to be tabled to November 12th, 2015.
There is a correction for that. We met with the applicant last Monday and he is still working on his revised plans. He's asked that it be tabled to December 10th. So if you could make your motion to that effect, we'd appreciate it.
Looking for a motion?
Motion.
To table to?
With a correction to table until December the 10th.
A second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second.
Starting with Mr. Jeff Watson.
Prove.
Mr. Ken Harson.
Yes.
Pat Hislop.
Yes.
Jerry Penland.
Yes.
Artie Probst.
Yes.
Peter Scanlon.
Yes.
Charles Schrader.
Yes.
Steve Stinner.
Yes.
And finishing with the chair, Mr. John Devoe.
Yes. We will move on to item B, which is SUB 15-005, Valley View Subdivision, request for an approval of a minor subdivision, a replat of parcel 1R, a vacation and replat of tract A, Jamestown Square, to create two lots for the purpose of constructing a 25-unit apartment building on Lot 1 located in the northwest one quarter of Section 13, T12SR69W of the 6th Prime Meridian. And generally located in the northwest, northeast corner of State Highway 67 and Valley View Drive containing 3.33 acres in the multifamily urban MFU zone district as requested by Keith Meyer, project manager of America West Solutions.
Thank you, Mr. Devoe. This is a subdivision of a tract of land that is shown on this aerial circled in yellow. You can see its proximity to downtown Woodland Park. It's about a mile north of town and located on the northeast corner of Highway 67 and Valley View Drive. To review the zones associated with this property, it's shown here in dark brown. That is the multifamily urban property zone. You can build between nine and 20 units per acre within this site. It is 3.33 acres. The applicant is proposing to split it into two lots. So around this property, we have a variety of other zones. Directly to the north is outside the city limits. That's within Teller County. And then to the east, there is both the community church, which is on a suburban residential tract, and then in the pink is community commercial. These are four office buildings that are owned by the community church. And then directly to the south is more multifamily urban development or zone has been developed with single-family homes on very small tracts of land. There's a small little pocket park or mainly open space primarily because there's a water line that runs directly through that for the Paint Pony Water System. Across Highway 67, there's a planned unit development. This area is slated for more multifamily apartments and commercial development along Highway 67. Further north is the O'Keefe Ceramics Building, which is zoned heavy service commercial, light industrial. And then north of there is the Tamarack Business Center and that's zoned service commercial. So you can see there's quite a bit of variety of zoning in this area. The other encumbrance to the area is that shaded in blue is the Lloy Gulch Flood Plane. So this challenges development and you will be seeing a flood hazard development permit later, perhaps in December, December 10th, for this project. And that's in order to construct a culvert and a driveway to cross the flood plane. So more to come on that portion of the development. Here's a closer in aerial of the subject property outlined in yellow. And Valley View Drive, Highway 67, you can also see the Centennial Trail that abuts the subject property. On near Valley View Drive, this portion where the willows have grown in, there is the small channel for Lloy Gulch. Few years ago, CDOT did do improvements to this bridge and added new culverts to help carry the 100-year storm. And this Lloy Gulch Channel traverses north through the golf course and eventually has a confluence with Trout Creek. Here's the existing building for Woodland Park Community Church Office Building. And then the church to the east, to the north are the existing townhomes that are in Teller County off of Apache Trail. And then again to the west is the O'Keefe Ceramics. There's also a vacant lot in front of O'Keefe Ceramics, the Tamarack Business Center. And then the undeveloped area of the Stone Ridge PUD. So those are the surrounding properties. This property was posted for this hearing. It was noticed with letters being sent out to folks who are within 150 feet. I did not receive any written comments. I did have a conversation with one of the neighbors that lives outside the 150 feet toward the south of this area, maybe about 300 feet or so from the site. And she is here this evening. The original plat for this tract, which is Lot 1 over here, was part of the Parkview Estates filing number two. And that was a replat of Lot 8 in the Paint Pony Ranch Club subdivision. So years ago in 1982, this parcel, Lot 1, was created with multiple easements because there were water lines and sewer lines that traversed the property, as well as the large drainage easement due to the flood plane. However, the flood plane was not mapped until 1988. Then in 84, the owners of the property created these townhome or office. And this, at this time, it was zoned commercial. So these weren't townhomes. I apologize. This was, these were office buildings, just like the office building that was developed here in the 90s or late 80s. Actually, yeah. So then it was replatted in 98 into two parcels. And I've outlined in red the existing office building. And then all of the other five office buildings remained. However, there was a rezoning in 89, in 98, I'm sorry. And that was to multifamily. There was a proposal for 42 townhomes in the late 90s, and that was approved but was never developed. However, the zoning changed from commercial to multifamily urban at that time. Then the owner vacated all of the interior lot lines. And that was done a few years ago. So right now, as platted, it looks like one large lot with the existing easements. And tonight, what you are reviewing is to subdivide this parcel into two. Lot 1 is adjacent to Highway 67 and is 2.12 acres. Lot 2 is somewhat to the east and behind the existing office building, and it is 1.21 acres. There are easements associated with the perimeter of this property that have been added. And then there are also the existing easements that are carried forward from the previous plats. So this is what is proposed and what you are looking at this evening in order to prepare Lot 1 for the development of the Valley View Apartments. And we do have a concept plan for that development, that we are anticipating a site plan review to be submitted here in the next couple of weeks. And this concept plan shows the access drive into the property across the flood plane from Valley View Drive into the parking lot that would serve the 25 units, the building that will front on Highway 67. It will meet all the required setbacks. It did receive last month a height variance to be able to construct the middle portion of this building to 35 feet. Currently, the multifamily urban zone requires a maximum of 30-foot height. However, Board of Adjustment agreed that the extra five feet is reasonable and that this concept plan shows how Lot 2 could potentially be accessed and developed with multifamily, more apartments, townhomes, even single-family homes. But there's no development plan proposed for Lot 2 at this time. So compliance with the code. A final plat is reviewed through Chapter 17.24 and design standards within that Chapter The staff report details the language and the sections of the code. And I'm just going to summarize that the first section that we look at is the information on the plat. This is really a technical review. It was prepared by a licensed surveyor and is reviewed for accuracy and easements. There are a couple of tweaks that I will mention in the conditions that need to be modified, but overall, the plat was well done and meets the majority of the plat information as required by this section. The next section is, does it meet the purpose of subdividing land? By creating two lots with a common access, they are buildable, they're suitable for development. Even though 20% of this property is encumbered with a flood plane and a drainage easement, the development will take that into consideration and there is ample room for meeting the landscaping, parking, and the footprint of a apartment building. So it meets the purpose of our subdivision standards. Then we look at site considerations, that it is suitable for development and that it protects the public for health, safety, and welfare. There's ample room of flat area that is suitable for development and will meet that criteria. The site plan review will address specifically the grading, the drainage, erosion control, utilities, landscaping, architectural design, and all the dimensional standards and requirements as put forth in the zoning regulations. And this is a use by right. In other words, it, an apartment building is allowed by right, straight out, within the multifamily urban zone as long as all the standards are met through the administrative review process. And I might point out that this architectural design for the building is a preliminary design, that there will be a more detailed rendering that will be submitted to the planning department in the near future. The other standard to look at is making sure that there's adequate frontage and streets. This property is served off of Valley View Drive, which is opposite Columbine Village, and will be able to be constructed to standards in order to accommodate the flood plane. And the new driveway will be approximately 200 feet from the Highway 67 intersection, which is ample separation to that intersection. The easements are adequate except for a couple of items. First, we're requesting that the easement along the side of Highway 67 be expanded from 10 feet to 15 feet. IREA, the electric service, had asked for that. Applicant has agreed. Certainly, you don't want to encumber your buildable property too extensively with easements. They already have about 20% of the property removed because of the flood plane. But this was reasonable because there will be a 25-foot setback requirement, so they can't build within that area anyway. And then the existing 30-foot utility easement that was drawn on the access point needs to be expanded slightly so that it does refer to access, especially for the benefit of Lot 2. Otherwise, Lot 2 would be landlocked, and it's simply by adding that as an access easement, then that cures that issue. As far as a stormwater easement, that has been accommodated within the flood plane. And there will be onsite detention. That will be the responsibility of the owner of the apartment building to maintain, of course, to construct. All the improvements ultimately are the developer's responsibility to construct. Lastly, there will be park capital fees assessed to this project. That is because it was originally zoned commercial. It was rezoned to multifamily. And whenever you increase the density of the community, then park capital fees kick in. Those are collected at the time of the development phase. So the site plan review, we will be assessing and collecting those at that time. So with that, the compliance to the code, it meets satisfaction with a few recommendations that after public comment, the staff recommends that the planning commission recommend to the city council to approve Valley View subdivision final plat, creating two lots from parcel 1R, with two conditions. First, we believe that the location of the Centennial Trail needs to be determined accurately in the field. When the CDOT built the new bridge and culverts for Lloy Gulch, they also shifted the trail. There may need to be an additional easement to accommodate that shift in the location of the trail. And then number two, a few tweaks or edits to the plat. First, expanding that utility and drainage easement adjacent to Highway 67 to 15 feet and add any necessary language regarding the trail easement access, easement and access. And then B, the 30-foot utility easement north of Valley View Drive to Lot 2 needs to be designated as a public access easement for the benefit of Lot 2. And C, a detailed utilities plan shall be submitted and reviewed in order to establish the appropriate easements for existing and new water lines and fire hydrants. Included in your packet was a letter from the fire department. Their concerns dealing with fire flow and access will be addressed in the detailed site plan review process. This is a placeholder to ensure that any new public lines to those fire hydrants will be included in easements. And then lastly, the certification block needs to contain the correct language for planning commission and city council approvals. So with that, we will turn it over to the applicant, who is here, Mr. Keith Meyer, and he is representing America West Housing Solutions. This is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that has been awarded 9% tax credits from the state in order to provide for an affordable housing project, which Mr. Meyer can explain in greater detail.
Thank you.
And we'd be happy to answer questions.
Mr. Meyer. Name, rank, show your number, all that good stuff.
Good evening. Keith Meyer, project manager for America West Housing Solutions. Sally did a great job basically explaining the project. It is a, an affordable income qualified housing project. 25 units. The 25th unit was added for a manager unit as requested by CHAPA, which is the Colorado Housing Finance Authority of the state of Colorado. Another one's administering the tax credits and the funding for the projects. So there was one unit added. Originally, it was a 24-unit project. It's one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. It's mainly two stories with the center section being three. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Don't all raise your hand or what? I have a question. Open spaces, is that what they, is Lot 2?
Yeah, you won't see the site plan, plus we haven't really submitted the final site plan. There's actually got to be a playground included in the design. There has to be a community garden so all the tenants have access to gardening space. There's a couple probably barbecue pit-type areas where they can go out and, because their decks are pretty small, so there's some common space where they could, there'll be a couple of barbecue grills, that kind of stuff. And then access to the Centennial Trail will provide two access points so they can have direct access to the trail. So, yes?
I know we're here to focus on the project.
Subdivision, yeah.
Not the use, but per se. But just for, you know, maybe my edification and others. Explain briefly the income qualification.
It's, the financing comes through the IRS program that the federal government administers. Every state gets a certain amount of funds every year. It was instituted, I think, in 1986 with Reagan. And it's to build affordable workforce housing. There's a program for independent senior housing. There are those other programs. But this one is for workforce income qualified housing. What that means is the units, there's calculations that we go through in the pro forma. And the rents are established based on local area medium incomes. And then, so you've got the average medium income of an area, and we establish rents based on 30, 40, 50, and 60% of those incomes.
Okay.
So it's hard, really kind of complicated in some sense, but all we're doing, it's not a market rate project. It can never be a market rate project for 40 years. So there's several stipulations on getting this money from the, to the tax credits. It's...
Okay. Thank you. And so the idea is that this would be a long-term project. It can't be flipped.
Right. Well, you can be flipped, and you can't change the parameters.
Right. It can't be flipped and turned into a market rate project.
Not for 40 years.
Got it. That's a pretty long time.
Right. The tax credits are only good for 10 years, but the investors who buy those tax credits get that benefit for 10 years plus any depreciation on the property.
So again, I'll stop. Roughly a family of four.
Mm-hmm.
However you want to figure that, whatever that means today.
Right.
One parent, three children, two parents, two children. What is the approximate income level that they would have to meet to qualify for an apartment?
Well, it's, the average family of four in this area is 72,900, some number. So that's saying the average family of four in our region.
Yep.
That's the income level, whether both parents are working, whatever the situation is. And that includes everybody.
Yep.
So our rents are based on percentage of income.
Right.
That you can only spend so much of your income on rent or housing needs. And then we're 30, 40, 50, and 60% of that 72,900 is what they, they're income qualified based on those percentages.
Right.
And then the rents are also established based on those...
For different size units.
Right. One, two, and three bedrooms in this project.
Okay. Thank you.
To give you an example, the project that's up in Divide is very similar to what they're doing. At the time when my, my son and his wife moved into that project, their income, income with three children could not exceed $44,000.
Okay.
If it was over that, they didn't qualify.
To live there.
Now that's been seven, eight years ago, and I'm sure it's probably...
Right. And it increases along with...
But it's, it's workforce housing, not welfare housing.
Oh, I understand. And, you know, disclosure item, I'm on the board of Hikes Peak Habitat for Humanity.
Oh, okay. So you ought to understand some of the...
I'm somewhat familiar with affordable housing issues. And I just wanted to see how that works. That doesn't affect my ability to make...
Yeah, HACAT operates a little differently as far as how they figure out which families qualify and stuff. And this...
Okay. Sorry. I hope I didn't get...
No, that's fine. It's good for everybody to know that.
The target demographic for something like this, for affordable housing in Woodland Park are our teachers, police, city workers, that sort of thing.
People who work in stores here.
Yeah, retail.
Great. Thank you very much.
Jerry?
Yeah, looking at the concept layout.
Of the site?
Of the site.
Okay.
What you got up on the board there. Highway 67 is getting noisier and noisier all the time. I was wondering why you laid it out that way instead of moving the apartments further back and maybe put a, some tree barriers for noise along 67. But it looks to me like maybe it's because of the possibility of a developing Lot 2.
Yeah, we couldn't absorb all the land cost in just this one project. So that's really the purpose of the two lots. And having the ability to develop Lot 2 as a separate project. So...
Could you develop Lot 2, though, with, by flipping the parking lot and the apartments to get them further away from the road?
Well, no matter what you do with Lot 1, you're going to have some kind of development eventually along that highway.
Yeah, but that would be another, I don't know, 50 feet or so more away from... Yeah, but that would be another, I don't know, 50 feet or so more away from the...
Oh, put the parking on that side?
Yeah, put, just flip the two and put trees along the highway.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying there.
And that would help the apartments too, because it's pretty noisy there now.
Right. Part of it was, we wanted direct access to the Centennial Trail, and we had to have a 25-foot setback anyway, so that allows for a pretty nice backyard, even though these are apartments, of green space between the buildings and the property, and then you've got the additional space to the trail. And we would have looked at putting it along the back side and then doing something else on the front, and we looked at all kinds of different concepts.
Yeah. To follow up on Jerry's comments, what if that goes the fore lane?
Where else? It's got to be within the right-of-way. Yeah, we're...
Gets closer and closer, though.
Yeah, I understand.
Any certain sound protection in the units because of the highway?
Well, from the highway, there's a fair amount of sound designed in these projects because they're apartments. You know, just between the units and, even with the fire codes nowadays, the double rocking we've got to do and some of the other things actually provide a thicker wall than you might even build in your own house.
But that's only unit to unit, not unit to...
Yeah, but there's still, we're a Class V sprinkled facility. And so we got, we got concrete on the floors, and we got the double rock ceilings, and I mean, it's just, there's a lot of stuff goes into apartment for fire that's a lot more stringent than a single-family house. And there's a good, you don't see the landscaping on here. There's a fairly decent landscape requirement that we're working through right now with the site plan that we're developing. So we'll be planting some trees. Now, are we going to screen it? No, not from the highway.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
The concern about having the fire department access, and it's saying it wanted a loop, but that it would only be after you developed Lot Two, is that being addressed?
Yeah, that's...
And where would that loop be?
It can be two things. It can be a loop, or it can be a three-point turn within 150 feet of a dead end. So actually, technically, we have that, just with that, without having to do this. So even if Lot Two doesn't develop right of way, we can provide the required turnaround for the fire trucks within the 150-feet dead end. Originally, we had this road up at the top here. That didn't really work well for trying to develop Lot Two, we didn't think. We moved our access point down on our parking lot, but still within the 150 feet so we can meet the fire requirement.
So it will be an improved driveway or street or something?
Just in the part that we have to accommodate the fire trucks. And we anticipate that Lot Two, whatever happens here, then we'll finish all the rest of this. They're only going to need, they're going to need two accesses in that up to whatever we're putting over here.
If I could elaborate on that a little bit, there is also a deeded access through parcel one. So by the office building, they will tie that in so that the fire trucks can get behind the office building and to these, both these parcels.
So it'll be maintained with snow removal for them to turn around or whatever they need to do.
Yeah.
I guess the other thing I'd like to address is about the tax increment and what's going to happen with the fire district if they're not collecting taxes. I mean, they're already stretched now.
That's a, see, yeah. Yeah, I have the same question, a little bit different, and that would be the city staff more, more or less. This is, I think, the third proposal since my short time on the commission, that we've looked at the same problem with the fire district, and we're doing it one at a time, one here, and then one, and then one, and then one. Is the city looking at a, a big picture of this problem?
Well, I can tell you that the city manager did meet with the fire chief in an executive session about some of these issues recently, so yes, there is some discussion.
So it is being looked at. Yeah, because we're, we're approving things one at a time, and over time, it could be a real problem. Okay.
Anybody else?
Except if you still don't have the money.
If not, we'll continue on, we'll go to item five. We're going to open for public comment. Do you have the list up there, Dave? Apologize in advance if I mess up pronouncing your name.
That was Amy.
Name and address.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Frances Sunell. I live at 1804 Columbine Village Drive, which I'm the one that Ms. Riley spoke with earlier today. I am slightly out of the area, but definitely within the area that this is going to affect. I'm kind of dismayed because not more of my neighbors are here that I've talked to about this. Everybody's pretty up in arms in the neighborhood about this, and I think what most annoys and irritates everyone is we're basically being told that this ship has already sailed, that there really isn't anything we can do about it. But that's not true. And I realize that there's a limited purpose for this meeting, but I think I need to express things that I think you all need to consider, because every time we approve something in relation to this project, it comes closer to fruition. So if you will indulge me, I will make my comments as brief as possible. I and my neighbors have the same sentiment, and that is, we love this beautiful place for its scenery and its views and its small-town feel. And I'm afraid this development is going to turn us into a suburb. Actually, it's going to be one of the starting points where we're going to be a suburb of Colorado Springs. All of us moved up here for the beautiful scenery. Everywhere we look, it's absolutely gorgeous. And the more we develop here, the more apartment complexes we put up, the more we're going to be driven further west, or further east, or further north, or further south. I moved up here after I retired, and I know that several other people did, and our retirement is going to be a lot different than the day that we closed on our houses. This is a matter of economics for the developer versus the good of the community and the beauty of the place. When those two are in conflict, I think we need to insist on keeping the beauty and the view, and make it the economic responsibility of the developer to go somewhere else. One of the examples I can give is when the Walmart was put in up here. I know that there was a lot of controversy surrounding that, but the Walmart kind of did get tucked in down the hill, and if you're not looking for it, you can't really see it, so... But that's not the case with this. This is going to stick out like a sore thumb. It's going to, it's on a flat plain in a valley. And one of the things about, if you've ever lived in a valley, if your neighbor is revving his truck or playing his stereo a little bit too loud two blocks away, everybody in the neighborhood can hear it. We're talking about adding 25 units to our valley. 25 households with cars, with kids, with dogs, Section 8 housing. Most of Section 8 housing recipients are on welfare and are unemployed. This is not an elderly community, from what I understand. And of course, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with people having the right to live with where they want, where they want to live, but I do have a problem with, with crowding an already crowded community with, with more things that are going to be bothersome to our daily lives. It's easy to say yes when it comes to bad development, but it comes with regret, not only for this generation, but for our grandkids and everybody in the future. We're called the city above the clouds, but with obstructive development, who's going to care anymore? Nobody's going to be able to see it. So do we say yes and bury our heads in the sand and just figure, well, we're going to have some economic benefit, which actually, from what I hear tonight, is kind of questionable for the city. But sometimes, there's time to say enough, and there's time to correct problems. One of the things that, and Ms. Riley knows I'm a retired attorney, but I never did any work with, in terms of planning or anything like that, so quite frankly, I'm getting a new education through this whole process. Here are some of the main problems that our neighborhood has with this project. Well, first of all, the developer is a non-owner, and that brings into question whether he has standing at this point in time, because he doesn't own the property. Secondly, the view is blocked for housing complex and businesses that have been here for decades. The property values are going to plummet. We're going to add congestion because just, if anybody is familiar with the area, Columbine Village Drive, which is basically the first street, is, if you don't turn quickly when you get into the neighborhood, you're going to miss it. And the turn into this apartment complex is going to be directly across from there. We're going to have cars in and out, and in and out all day, and, you know, frankly, we've got enough congestion in that area. One of the things that concerned me when we were here on September 21st on the issue of the roof variance, and I, I was concerned that, maybe this is the mentality for this project. The, the variance was from a 30-foot roof to a 35-foot roof. And after the meeting, I heard a little bit of an exchange between one of the members of the commission and the developer, talking about how nice the idea of a, of, of, an aesthetic roof would be. And so the five feet, that's, that's great. And I just felt like raising my hand and saying, "Purple Mountain Majesty, that trumps a nice roof any day in my book." And I also thought to myself, if we're given it five feet, because 30 feet blocks Pikes Peak for all these people, and we give it an extra five feet, because hey, it's blocked anyhow, why don't we just put in a skyscraper if that's the mentality? That's not the way that we need to be approaching these things. We have to have as little impact on the character of our community as possible. That needs to be the thing that is the most important to us. We don't need the extra housing. There are 7,000 people, give or take, in the city of Woodland Park in the outlying areas, and our population hasn't increased in keeping with all of the new apartment units we have. As we all know, by Safeway, they've got about 140-some units completed out of the 168 total, and the rents range anywhere from 829 to about 1,500. They are not Section 8 housing, they are not low-income housing, but they do have a reasonable ratio that's going to cover what we keep hearing about who these apartments are for. Entry-level teachers, entry-level firefighters, police officers. The ratio for approval is either they have to have enough assets. If you're, if you're rich, you can rent, you can rent any apartment. But their basis is that you need to make, your monthly gross income has to be two and a half times your apartment rent. And the lowest rent they have is 829, so do the math on that. We're not going to see much difference in terms of what the out-of-pocket is for the folks in the apartments by the Safeway, the Trail Ridge, and the ones that are proposed here, except we're going to have a low-income housing area that's going to be congested, and it's going to stick out like a sore thumb. I'm not crazy about the Trail Ridge apartments, but at least they kind of tucked them down the hill, and that's not the case with this one. The developer says that it's going to be for working people in Woodland Park, but I have yet to see any statistics with respect to what our housing deficit is. And I did some research today, and in the area that's within 12 miles of Woodland Park, there are 163 available rental units. Those don't, those do go down into Colorado Springs and the western end and that sort of thing, but it's certainly a reasonable commute. And there are also at least four units in my immediate vicinity in my neighborhood that are single-family homes that rent for less than most of the apartments in Trail Ridge by the Safeway. So I don't see any evidence that there's a need for this project. One of the things that also concerns me with regard to congestion is we're talking about splitting this into two, two separate parcels of land. That just tells me that in the future, we're going to fill up every spare inch. Another concern that I have that was raised was the issue of the drainage. We're going to have 25 units that are directly adjacent to a floodplain, and everybody knows what bling problems that we have had up here in the past couple of years. I don't see anything that will serve the health, the safety, and the welfare of the community. And as we know, those are the three main things that we always have to consider: health, safety, and welfare. Another problem that I have is this could be considered spot zoning. Now, I realize that, as the ship may have already sailed argument, may defeat every, absolutely everything that I have to say. But sometimes, what was okay and looked like a good idea in 1982, 1984, 1989, and 1998 turns out to be a bad idea, and we have to fix the bad idea. We've got enough stuff here. If that's the case, what, one of the issues also that concerns me is this may be an issue of spot zoning, which, from what I understand, if it's not illegal, it's unethical, and certainly contrary and illogical and not commensurate with the values of the people that live in the neighborhood and the people that live in Woodland Park in general. If, to be spot zoning, a project has to benefit one person, and it does benefit the developer here, and I don't think it benefits anybody else, we're certainly not going to see tax dollars from this, and it is to the detriment of the remaining members of the immediate community, and that is a fact. And I, I urge each and every one of you to canvas my neighborhood, three or four streets, and see what kind of feedback that you get. I know these kind of meetings aren't the meetings that people want to come to, so that's why I'm here. I, I didn't really want to give up my time, but that's why I'm here. The developer's going to be receiving subsidies, and so this project is to his benefit and nobody else's.
Are you close?
Almost. Crime rates always go up with low-income housing. We are also in a valley, and as, as I said before, the crowded congestion is just going to be exacerbated. The area is too small for the existing condition in the area. The walking trail will be cheapened. Nobody wants to walk past low-income housing teeming in a small area. They're going to, they're going to be pets that we have to deal with, and this building is going to be directly above our drainage, and of course, we all know what, what pet waste issues due to our drinking water. Public services such as nearby police and fire will be stretched unreasonably. The tax base for low-income housing will not cover the strain on those public services. I haven't heard anything about whether or not the issue of our public services such as police and fire have been addressed with 168 units that went in around Safeway. And I did hear that raised earlier today. We may be writing checks that we can't cash later. I hope that this project never comes to fruition. Nobody in my neighborhood wants it. Well, very, very few people. Everyone that I've spoken with does not want this project, and I hope that there's something that we can do. And I think that perhaps a start will be denying, dividing this property into two different lots, because the writing is on the wall, that second lot, that every square inch is just going to be used in the future. So if we have a place to start, let's start there, and I ask that you deny the request to divide the parcel. Thank you.
Bill George?
I had to change my presentation a little.
Address and name.
Received from here. So, I guess, excuse me?
Address and...
755 Apache Trail, number nine. I'm an owner, and I am also the president of the Valley Peak Village Town Home Association. First question is, has it already been changed from the nine to 20 units to the 25 units? That have been approved, okay, already? Per your hand out here, re-plat. I thought somebody mentioned it was nine to 20 originally, now it's 25 units?
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll answer your questions after you get through all the comments.
Oh, okay. Okay, and second, I have a question probably for Keith on the 35-foot. Is that to peak or just the wall?
We'll answer questions.
Okay. And then, what he submitted here, is that the final design? Or... Receive, that's not quite the final design yet?
We're just subdivision plat, we're not buildings.
Okay. Correct. Okay, and then I would like... And then I would like to know, for best management practices for the construction site, does Woodland Park apply onsite inspector, or is that the responsibility of the contractor? And the responsibility for drainage and maintenance, I know we have a real big problem when they constructed these units. They've got retention pond here that's never been maintained, and what that has caused is our hard driveways in the back of our unit flood. I'd just like to be assured that that will be addressed and monitored. And also in that area, right through here, there is a perp consumer line. I'm not sure if you're aware of that. And my last one would probably be that I'd appreciate if there was some consideration to consider concessions to lessen the immediate impact. I realize it's probably a go project, mostly to do with light pollution, the impact on our unit and such, and the drainage being kept up. That's right.
Thanks, Bill. You're welcome. Chris Rutch.
Thank you for allowing us to say something. Yeah, I live at 755 Apache Trail, number 11. And if I may show you on the map where that is. It's this one. It's very small. And I've already said, last time we came here, I made my points, and I'll be really quick. First of all, I would like to know who does this permit for flood hazard permit? Where does that come from? And perhaps you can tell me maybe after the meeting?
We'll explain.
Yeah, thank you. Because I'm really concerned about that. We are so close to the area that is designated for drainage. We have crawl spaces. I don't know if any of the houses have basements, but I know I have a crawl space that is just dirt underneath. It has never flooded. However, the water does run. And again, excuse me while I show you where it runs. Damn. We already have flooding when we have heavy rain, and it runs across the bike trail. The police have to come and stand at the sort of beside the end of Apache Trail and 67. They have to be there because of the floodwater and the debris that comes down Apache Trail. So there's already something established there. And so I really want you to make sure that that is really taken care of. Highway 67 has CDOT with drainage that goes underneath, and I'll show you where that is. I think it's exactly here, just about there. And it does not, it does not take the water when it's heavy rain. It just floods, okay? So that is going to be something that you really need to make sure that that's taken care of. Because with the additional drainage from the parking lot and from the streets that are going to be put in, which, okay, fine, that you've established that that's going to happen. So I think that you really need to be really, really careful that that drainage is working right. And that is just one of my things. And the other question that I have is, has CDOT got any plans of widening 67 long-term that you know of? Because if they do widen that, then obviously it's going to make quite a bit of difference to the planning here. And I'm just asking that question. Do you know if CDOT plans to open it wider, make it maybe four lanes or something? And if they do, how are they going to do that? Just a question. And that's all. And I thank you because previous people have covered pretty well everything. Thank you so much for listening to me. Thank you.
Bob Bartlet.
Mr. Chairman, I have no comments at this time. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. At this point, we'll go to item seven, which is rebuttal from the applicant.
I can address some of these items if you want me to. And we're really just looking at a property line subdivision here, but if you guys are willing, okay. It's not Section 8. There's no Section 8 vouchers involved in the project. So it is just an income workforce housing, income-qualified project. It's not for homeless, it's not for a whole lot of other things that some of these projects can be for. When you said something about the kids of the future, I've got two kids, and neither one of them live in Woodland Park because they can't afford to live here. I guess there's two sides to that story. You know, our cost of housing up here basically prices out most of our young professionals and young people. We are, the property ownership has been assigned to us, and it's all under contract, the assignment's in place. We technically haven't closed on the property, but we have legal right to the property and all that we're doing here. On the flooding, the project will have a substantial retention, detention pond down here adjacent to the lower part of the project, adjacent to the floodway. And we will have to retain 100% of any water that we collect on our site and release it at historic rates. And that's just standard engineering in today's world for everybody that develops anything. So we won't be increasing any flood issues with the existing drainage because we're releasing our water at its historic rate. And that's down in the area where the playground, the community garden, and all that kind of stuff. And we've got snow storage down there, so it's all going to be kind of combined in a landscaped, clean area. It'll be designed to retain our water on our site. I don't know what to tell them about the retention pond on their site. That's nothing I have anything to do with. Zoning, and it is zone multi-family urban, which allows nine to 20 units per acre. So this lot one is 2.12 acres, so technically I could put 42 units on this lot one if I wanted to. And we're not even close to 42 units, we're only 25. The whole site's 3.3, so technically if we didn't divide anything, we could come in by right and put 66 units on just 3.3 acres. And we're not trying to get those kinds of densities, we're not proposing anything like that, as you can see. That's been zoned that way for 17, 18 years now. Design, yeah, we're still doing a final design. I think you'll like the newer design that we have. I'll share that with you in the next couple of weeks. We did some stuff with the roof lines, and we kind of broke up being a little bit nicer to make it look like smaller buildings. So I'll share that with you. The agency that looks over the construction is Pike's Peak Regional Building Department. So it's same as if we were building in the Colorado Springs or any area that the Pike's Peak Regional Building has authority. They're the governing agency that'll inspect the project and the construction. Yeah, and also CHAF is going to have an inspector, or investors that buy the tax credits have their inspector. And the books are just thick about the design standards that have to go into these projects is above and beyond what we normally see because it's tied to federal government requirements of the tax credits. The light pollution, I think Sally can address that better than me. There are some pretty strict lighting design standards in this town as far as full cutoff and stuff like that, and we'll comply with all the current regulations there. There's no basements. Let me ask about basements. This is all slab-on-grade and up. There's no basements at all level to the project. There's no basements. There's no, nothing underground. There's nothing underground. Yeah, no, there's no basements. And nothing back in the. Drainage, all our property will drain from this point to that retention pond area away from Apache Trail. It'll all drain to the southwest. And then also, you know, obviously be collected in the retention pond and then released. That was all I had as far as my notes I took. Do you have anything else, Sally?
Sally, you had questions too? I know you should write things down.
Yes. There was concern about the need for this extra housing. And Councilman Schaefer and Planning Commissioner Robinson have been working on an assessment, a housing assessment for Teller County. And it's right now in draft form. And this is for the whole county. But looking at Woodland Park right now, there's 2,100 current units within Woodland Park. And for in commuters, those people who are now working in Woodland Park that would like to live here, there's a need of 300 units, according to this study. For the potential of job growth, and this is over the long term, but right now, job growth, they're looking at about 400 potential units. And then just normal routine growth over the time, there's also about 120 units per year that are needed to keep up and catch up with our current rate. So there is quite a bit of need for especially the affordable level housing in our community. And we're happy to share the statistics behind those numbers. And Councilman Schaefer will be able to speak with the commissioners about the new housing assessment that will be coming out here soon.
I should add that there was a housing assessment done in 2006 for Teller County, and subsequent to that, other housing assessments for Woodland Park, and they're all remarkably consistent in terms of the amount and the amount of need that we have in Teller County, existing need, let alone projected growth that the State Demographers Office projects for Woodland Park. So it's rather significant. Yes?
Does that account for the attrition of people moving out of Woodland Park?
A further clarification about the comment made about spot zoning. This is not a zoning hearing. This is property that is currently zoned, and in fact, the questioner's property is zoned exactly the same as this property. Her home sits on a multi-family urban tract which extends down. This is not changing the zoning, although there are different types of zones around here. This is not spot zoning. To further explain the detention requirements, our city engineer, his background is drainage. He looks at the drainage reports that are completed by a civil engineer. The drainage report is thoroughly vetted through our city engineer, and then you will be seeing the flood hazard development permit. So the question of who does that flood hazard development permit? It is first created and evaluated and proposed by the civil engineer that's hired by the contractor. John Schwab will be completing that. He is a professional engineer. And then it will be very thoroughly reviewed by Bill Alsbach, also a professional engineer for the city. And it will be evaluated to the FEMA standards that are in our Title 20 of the municipal code, as well as the detention pond is required to detain the 100-year storm, the five-year storm, plus 75% of the two-year storm. So it is a very conservative approach to detain and release that runoff from the roof, the parking lot, at the historic rates. These are very technical documents, but it is highly screened and very carefully looked As far as the inspector, not only is there regional building department inspectors and the CHAF inspectors, the city also has a site inspector who monitors this on a daily basis because it is his job to make sure that the erosion control measures are in place and that they are functioning. It is a performance-based application, so if there is a breach in the silt fence, or the waddles, or some problems, it is up to the developer to get those finished right away. And in fact, they have a storm water erosion control management permit through the state as well. And the state will slap heavy fines if there are problems with this site. Once you disturb more than an acre of land, then the state permit also kicks in. So there's plenty of checks along the way, not only local, but state as well. I think that is probably all this I feel I should answer.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant?
I have one about the detention pond. It will have to be maintained because I know the one they're referring to is not maintained, and it is a disaster. So it would be kept mowed, or are you going to have any kind of fencing around it to prevent children?
No, it's going to be designed part of our landscape area, so it's going to be real gradual slopes and stuff. I mean, you'll see it in the site plan when we submit, if you want to come in and see that. So it's not like it's just a deep, you know, hole in the ground where it collects a bunch of water. It's actually designed by an engineer as far as the volume and how it's released, and the last step, we get our landscape architects involved in how it looks. So I'm sure, you know, I can't really tell you more than that, other than it's, it's not like, some of these retention ponds you see in huge subdivisions, Colorado Springs, where they're like, almost like mini lakes. No, it's, we're not talking about a facility that big. It's just going to hold our historic water from this site. We're not retaining any water uphill from our side or anything like that. I don't know if that helps. I don't know if it uses you anymore.
No. I mean, I know what the detention ponds are. I'm familiar with them.
Yeah, they don't have to be.
What I'm asking is, is it going to be maintained? And what are you going to do to prevent children from getting down in there?
The, one of the reasons we added the 25th unit was we have an onsite manager of the entire project. The reason we didn't do that because in smaller projects like this, we usually don't have an onsite manager. Usually projects that are 150 units, 200 units, stuff like that. But because it's kind of a standalone, smaller project in a small town, we actually did end up adding that unit for an onsite manager who will be responsible for all the maintenance and stone removal and all the other stuff that goes along with operating the property. America West Housing Solutions will continue to be the owner at least through year 15, and probably, that's our mission, is we're trying to develop projects. And one of the reasons we became a nonprofit was we just wanted to provide this type of need to communities. So we don't have any interest in, we're not flippers, we're not developers that turn around and do that. We're actually.
Local ownership.
Yeah.
Local ownership.
Yeah, I've lived here since 1992, and my partners both lived here.
Can you hear the comment earlier, it's out of town.
No. I've lived up here for 23 years now. And like I say, it will become part of our portfolio for our nonprofit housing group.
Other questions?
I had one other comment about the comment for congestion. There will be a trip generation letter that will be submitted as part of the site plan review that will be shared with CDOT. CDOT reviews these. The capacity on Highway 67 is not even close to a level of service that would warrant expansion at this point. There is, on the projected future, to expand a portion of 67, but that would be between County Road or Evergreen Heights Drive and Kelly's Road. And Kelly's Road will likely see a traffic signal when that is warranted. There will likely be improvements on research at that intersection to create a dedicated left-turn lane going north before you'd see any widening. So it's unlikely that this area would be widened anytime soon, but there is ample room. right-of-way, in fact, there's 132 feet of right-of-way on Highway 67. That center line is 66 feet on either side.
I didn't even know that.
Anybody else?
A couple of questions for staff. My understanding, we're just looking at the, splitting the parcels into two lots.
Correct.
And that the discussion we've had regarding the development, what's actually going on, that is kind of not pertinent to our discussion tonight.
Correct.
It's nice to know what's going on, but, and that, am I correct in that the review of the actual development will be handled administratively?
That's correct.
So we will not see that presented to us for our review?
That's correct. And just to inform the neighbors, the way that administrative review process works, because there is an opportunity for the neighbors or interested parties to come into the planning office, take a look at the plans. When we receive a full package of site plan review, that will include the drainage, the traffic study, the trip generation letter, the landscaping, the lighting plan, all the details associated with the project. When we receive that complete package, then within five days of that, we send out letters and we post the property, that this is a public notice, not a public hearing, but a public notice, that there is a 15-day period for the general public to take a look at those plans. Then if they have comments, we share those comments with the applicant. If it's above and beyond the standards, that, the minimum standards that we have, say example for landscaping, then we can't require the developer. We can ask for improvements, but we can't require them. After that 15-day period is over, then the staff will write up their analysis and submit that to the applicant, and the applicant goes then forward with developing their final plans that will move into construction drawings.
Okay. And then on your recommendations, a couple of questions there. Sounds like the Centennial Trail was actually built on the subject property. Is it cross over the property line? That's why we're asking for an easement?
We are not sure. We first want to verify whether it has or not, and originally it was not. It was just with this new bridge, they pushed it a little bit further to the east, so we want to verify that and then to include the easement for the trail.
And was that constructed by CDOT?
It was.
So potentially, they're trespassing on the property.
No, they received a maintenance, a construction easement when they were constructing it. It's just that the city engineer feels that it needs to be verified.
So there is an easement for the trail already?
There was a construction easement for the trail. The property owner was paid for a construction easement, because, you know, it's tight in there, and they had to utilize a portion of the private property in order to construct it.
It's one of the reasons you're opening up wider? Is that the 15 feet?
Yes.
Oh, I R E A.
One, I R E A was the first.
We don't have any problem with that, adding additional language to give them even, at the bridge.
And the other thing is, you want to convert the utility easement to a ingress egress access, and I noticed that's 30 foot. What's our standard street width?
For a commercial property, it's 24 feet wide. And a street width is also, a right-of-way is 50 feet. It's not necessary for a private drive.
Okay. Looking at the proposed development plan, I know that's still schematic, but it does look like the road exceeds outside that 30-foot easement, especially at the corners. So is it reasonable to increase that width of that easement for ingress and egress?
It is. If they have a radius that needs to be included into that, it's good catch.
So 50-foot easement, which is, or road right-of-way, which is just south on Call by Village Drive, is it reasonable to extend that onto this property for that easement?
No, we're not going to extend the public road right-of-way. This will be a private driveway.
And I think there was one recommendations I read that recommends that the driveway be constructed to city standards for streets.
The city standard means the construction standard. So the depth and the compaction of the gravel, the subbase and the asphalt depth, and the curb and gutter, and those types of standards, not necessarily the width, if that's where you were going with that.
Well, I was unclear on that, but thank you for clarifying. I think we would have to increase that easement to allow for those, and I guess that's part of the, this is part of the plat, so that easement should be documented on the plat.
Yes. We will, we will tweak the plat after we've done a thorough review of the site plan.
Thank you.
Will there be sidewalks along that driveway coming in?
There, the sidewalk requirements for a multifamily project is along the rights-of-way. So they will be required to construct a sidewalk on that south boundary, or, or either on the south side of Valley View. Mr. Alsbach has done a sidewalk plan for Valley View Drive that would start at 67 and go all the way to Crestwood Park. He's already designed that, but it was designed on the south side. So there's some talk that we would have the developer build that portion on the south side of Valley View Drive to tie into the future connection. As far as internal sidewalks, we'll look at that, but they are, we haven't seen the details on that.
Okay. Because with them being multifamily and you're obviously children, that's a pretty long driveway, if you will, of kids walking, because I'm assuming you'd be kids walking to school and stuff. There's no buses.
Second that, I'd encourage the review of the actual site development, that we look at pedestrian access to the site from the public right-of-way. And we encourage installation of sidewalks to accommodate that.
Good point.
Just one more clarification for Sally. If the developer had chosen not to request this division, they would have a perfect use of right as, to develop this entire piece of property according to what they proposed here, and it would be strictly administrative. Is that correct?
That's correct.
We would never be talking about this in this, our meeting. It would strictly follow, so if they wanted to develop whatever density you had.
Well, you could go up to 66 units on the terrace, sorry.
Across the entire 3.3 approximately acres, we wouldn't be talking about any of this.
That's correct, with the exception of the flood hazard development.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
And there will be, city council will also have an action item of applying the taps, the water taps for these 25 units.
Got it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anything within discussion of ourselves? Any questions? If not, we will look for a motion in a second.
We all make a motion to move to recommend the approval of the Valley View subdivision final plat to create two plots from parcel 1R, a vacation and replat of track eight, Jamestown Square with the following two conditions. Want me to read the two conditions?
No.
That have been previously outlined, including all of the edits to condition two that you outlined.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
Okay, and beginning roll call with Mr. Ken Hartsfield.
Yes.
Ms. Pat Hisla.
Yes.
Mr. Jerry Penland.
Yes.
Marty Probst.
Yes.
Peter Scanlon.
Yes.
Carl Triter.
Yes.
Steve Stanner.
Yes.
Jeff Watson.
Yes.
Ending with Chairman John Deva.
Yes.
Thank you. This moves to the city council docket on November 5.
There will also be a public hearing there. Your public comment, you're more than welcome to go there, express any views you'd like to do there. They have a five-minute limit, fellas, on brevity is the word. Farming.
Thank you.
Okay. Chairman's report, I have none. Commissioners' report, for the good of the order, anything going on? Sally's report?
Just two quick items. First of all, I'd like to say that we do not have a meeting in November, so you have the November 12 evening off, and the fourth Thursday is Thanksgiving, so you have that to enjoy with your families. So our next meeting will be December 10. And secondly, on your desk this evening is an invitation that currently the Historical Preservation Committee is doing a survey of 30 structures and sites, primarily in the Lake Edition just north of City Hall, and a few in this downtown area. In fact, Memorial Park is one of the intensive surveys, so we've captured the history on Memorial Park. And so the results of that survey, preliminary results, are going to be presented on Monday evening at 6:30 here in the council chambers. Our consultant will be here to talk about the prehistorical era, the historical eras, and then I'll present the 30 structures that will be part of this survey. So you're welcome to join us for that. And that's all I have.
Let's take a five-minute recess. Our work session starts at 8:30. Okay. Motion for a chairman?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Allies in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We adjourned.
Thank you. Jill, Bob, and Larry, if I can hear from the work session.